Oh, okay. There they go. Everybody hear me? Kimberly, anything to report back from closed session?
No, there's no reportable action. The City Council provided direction to the city's labor negotiators and real property negotiators, but no reportable action.
Thank you very much. Call the meeting to order, please. Donna?
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Powers.
Aye. We're gonna have a minute of silent prayer and then the flag salute. Donna, will you lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I hope you all said your prayers real fast. Wait, did you say multiple prayers? Okay, the video statement, please.
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, May 19th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, May 20th at 9:00 a.m. The City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website.
Thank you, Donna. Is there any additions, approval, agenda approvals, additions and/or deletions, Council? Okay, then we'll move right along to presentations, and it looks like we're gonna swear in a new police officer, and that's to you, Chief.
You stand right in the middle so everybody can see. You know, I think I'm gonna start to sound like a broken record here and talk about the people that we're hiring. We have two this week that we're gonna be introducing, and I believe one next council meeting. And so, I think that it's an amazing effort on our part, and when I say ours, I mean the recruitment team for the Police Department, going out and finding the brightest and the best to come work for the City of Galt. The two that we're gonna be talking about today, one officer and one that is gonna be going to the Police Academy here on May 24th, both Army vets, and it's evident by their demeanor and the way they conduct themselves that the Army played a big part in their development as future leaders, and so we are blessed that they are decided to come to work for the City of Galt. So, to start off with, I am gonna introduce Max Dodgen. So, Max and I have had a couple of conversations, and he is a lateral officer from the city of Sacramento. So, I wanna thank the city of Sacramento for training him for the last couple of years, and I have a great pleasure into stealing them from the city of Sacramento to come work for the city of Galt. Max is a resident of Galt, which is his motivation to wanna come here and work. He is the youngest of three brothers, and he started as an EMT and then went into the Army. And when he finished up in the Army, he and his wife, Kristen, where they met when they were 14-years-old, is that right? Wow, I should give her credit for the man you turned into then, not the Army. And then she has two beautiful kids, Blakely and Henry, and I'm not going to steal his honor on introductions, so I think probably we should do the swearing-in, and then you can introduce your family to everybody. You guys coming down? You wanna come down? And some of you might recognize Grandma.
Yeah.
Coming down. Okay, you can be sworn in with your daughter.
So, raise your right hand. And you're gonna repeat after me and the microphone. I, state your name.
I, Max Dodgen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That takes obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Enduring such time.
As I am an employee.
As I am an employee.
For the city of Galt.
For the city of Galt.
I will faithfully discharge the duties. Of the position of police officer.
Of the position of police officer. According to the best of my ability. Thank you. First off, I just wanna thank everybody for being here, and I wanna give a special thanks to Chief Sockman and the entire Galt Police Department for taking a chance on me and letting me come out here and be a part of this family. I also wanna give a special thanks to my wife, Kristen. She supports me in everything I do, helps us raise two beautiful children, and I truly feel blessed to be able to work in the city of Galt. My children go to the school in the city of Galt. I'm a community here, they're gonna grow up with the community. I just wanna say I truly feel blessed, and I promise to do everything I can to be the best police officer I can for the city.
Thank you and welcome. Aren't you gonna introduce the...
Going back and forth, are we gonna do introductions right now, too?
Yeah.
All right. That's great. All right, Cameron, you wanna come up? Stand right in the middle so they can all see you. So, one of the things that we also are able to do here in Galt is we get to spend time and select folks that want to become police officers and send them to the Police Academy, and Cameron Smith is one of two that are gonna be starting the academy on May 24th. And so, Cameron went through a rigorous interview process, and a couple of things that made him stand out is, like I said, his demeanor, his military bearing, and the fact that he's local. Local meaning that he grew up in Lodi, so we're not gonna hold that against you, but you know, he grew up in Lodi, graduated from Lodi High in 2011 and joined the Army as a combat engineer. Stationed at Fort Riley, Kansas, correct?
Yes.
And then he started his education process, did two years in Lubbock, Texas. You were in Lubbock, Texas, went to the University of Texas, right?
Texas, Texas.
Thank you. Then finished out his degree online and moving back here with... And so, I mean, we are just honored that you wanted to come work here. I'm sure you're gonna make a great addition to our family, and you know, remember we're north of Lodi, and so you just move up here and be part of our community. So, no pressure. Anyway, so, this is Cameron Smith.
I wanna thank everybody for being here, and like you said, my name's Cameron Smith. I'm from Lodi, grew up there, and I went to the Army, and I'm glad to be here. I thank the Galt Police Department for welcoming me in, Chief Sockman for giving the go-ahead to hire me, and I'm excited to start the Police Academy next Wednesday. That should be fun. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
My only word of advice to them was, don't mess up at the academy. That's all I told them, so.
Yeah.
We'll be checking on you continually, so.
Make sure you study. Okay, Donna, could you please read public comment?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the Council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address Council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council and limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the Council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the clerk.
Thank you, Donna, and do we have any? None? Okay, could you also please read the information and consent calendar?
Minutes of the regular meeting of May 2nd, 2017. Receive and file warrants for the period ending May 2nd, 2017. Designation of applicant's agent resolution for non-state agencies with the California Office of Emergent Services. Quarterly financial report for quarter ending March 31st, 2017. Award of contract for construction management services related to the industrial water treatment plant 2016 deep well project and Eastview Annexation Property Tax Exchange Agreement with Sacramento County.
Thank you, Donna. Do I have a motion to approve, please?
I'm moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Cruz and Lamson, call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Powers.
Aye. Passed five to zero. Okay, now we're on to the zoning ordinance repealing and replacing Chapter 18.58 Cannabis/Marijuana cultivation of the Galt Municipal Code. Chris?
Bear with me one moment, we got a power point coming up. Good afternoon, Chris Arias, Community Development Director. The item you have before you is a proposed repeal and replacement of Section 18.58 of the Galt Municipal Code relating to Proposition 64 and specifically the cultivation of marijuana or cannabis. And I'll say marijuana or cannabis, but obviously they're the same thing. As you know, voters passed Proposition 64, which legalizes the recreational use of marijuana. There are aspects of Proposition 64 other than cultivation, but the purpose of this report is to focus on the personal cultivation only. We plan to come back to City Council and address other issues at a later time. The law pertaining to Prop 64 authorizes people over 21-years-old the ability to cultivate, possess, harvest, or process up to six marijuana plants. The six-plant maximum applies per parcel, not per person, and is a cumulative total of both indoor or outdoor if both are allowed. Cities can reasonably regulate the personal cultivation but are prohibited from banning indoor cultivation. The city has the option of completely banning outdoor personal cultivation or allow it with some regulations like setbacks, height limits, and other reasonable requirements. The city may not ban indoor personal cultivation of marijuana. State law allows for the indoor cultivation either to occur in a private residence or in an enclosed structure. The city could also require a cultivation permit imposing fire, electrical, or other similar items the city deems necessary for health and safety. Other cities have enacted ordinances related to Prop 64. Elk Grove, Rancho, and Lodi are all pretty similar in that they allow indoor in an enclosed structure as well as the primary residence. They're also similar in the fact that they prohibit outdoor grows, and Rancho Cordova is different where they require a cultivation permit.
Chris, can I ask you a question real quick, please? What do we mean by accessory structures? That is structure by itself that can be in the backyard? I'm just trying to clarify that.
It's basically a structure that is not the main structure, so shed, greenhouse.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. So, the staff recommendation is to... I should say the staff presented cultivation options to the City Council a couple of different times, and council members expressed concern with prohibiting outdoor grows and also requiring a cultivation permit process. In addition, the chief and I had met with members of the public to seek their input as well, and based on the input from the community members and council, we have come up with a staff recommendation for this ordinance, and it is basically as you see on the screen, where as we allow, we're recommending allowing indoor cultivation in an enclosed accessory structure, also in the primary residence, and allowing outdoor cultivation in containers no greater than 25 gallons, and that's typically half a wine barrel. Then we also recommend the continued prohibition on commercial cultivation. So, the proposed ordinance does contain some standards moving forward, and the standards are intended to protect either neighboring uses or also structures. So, the accessory structure, if they're gonna grow on it, must meet the setbacks of that structure. So, for example, if it is grown in a structure under 120 square feet, it's required to be five feet from the side, five feet from the rear, and then six feet from other homes or other structures. Also, the outdoor cultivation in containers no greater than 25 gallons must meet the setbacks of the main structure. So, the main structure's a little bit different in the accessory, in that it requires a greater rear setback of 10 feet. Our ordinance allows for the maximum six plants per parcel. We require landlord approval, not permitted on properties used for daycare, youth centers, or group homes. We regulate the indoor lighting not to exceed a certain wattage. And the next one, where we require a functional kitchen, bathroom, and bedroom facilities, is so that the primary use of the home is not for growing marijuana, it's actually a residence, and the growing of marijuana is just ancillary to the main home. Then cultivation areas not to be accessible by persons 21-years or younger, and cultivation activities shall not be visible from the public right away, and we put a maximum height of six feet on the outdoor plants. Should also be noted that this item was presented to the Planning Commission at their April meeting, and after a healthy discussion, they voted unanimously to recommend approval of the proposed ordinance. So, that concludes staff presentation. We recommend that the City Council introduce the ordinance repealing and replacing Chapter 18.58 of the Galt Municipal Code, and we'll be available to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Council questions? Really?
Comment.
Comment? Okay. That's gonna be faster than I thought, maybe.
Maybe not. I'm gonna bring something up to council that was put in place back in 2014, that being our mission, vision, and organizational values. Specifically, the vision statement for the city of Galt will be a premier family-oriented community united to create a unique city with diverse shopping, dining, entertainment, and employment opportunities within a small-town atmosphere. Okay? It's my opinion that growing it outdoors, even in the buck, in the containers, goes against that, and I'll explain it in this manner. As I've said in prior meetings, Prop 64 was passed by the voters, okay? It allows for the six plants grown indoors for recreational use, okay? So, we should make sure that that's a known. It doesn't affect the Compassionate Care Act, it's for recreational use, okay? So, it's a choice. We have to abide by what Prop 64 said, okay? Our surrounding cities, and you mentioned several, Elk Grove, Lodi, Rancho Cordova, you missed a couple, Folsom, Citrus Heights, and even the county of Sacramento have banned outdoor grows. The city of West Sacramento has an ordinance that allows distribution of marijuana but no outdoor cultivation. So, in essence, what you're doing is you're creating an island for Galt for those who want to grow it outdoors, those who want to avoid the laws. By growing it outdoors, and us being the only city doing this, you're gonna create a magnet. Is this the kinda place you want for a community that's touted to attract families? To me, that's counter to that. I have no problem with the people growing their marijuana, but it needs to be in a secured building. In a house? If you have a house big enough to do it, great, just understand you have the mold issues. An outbuilding, where we allowed 10-by-12, was it 10-by-12 buildings?
120 square feet.
120 square feet. I see no problem with doing that. It's outside. I priced the cost of clear lucite or clear paneling for roofs at some of the local places, not that expensive. Again, it's for recreational purposes, so if you wanna do it, by all means, there's gonna be a cost to you for it, it's not free. It's sorta like, and I understand some of my colleagues here don't like the idea of having permits, okay? I'll abide by that for now. But if you look at it, every single thing we do for recreational purposes, whether it be fishing licenses, hunting licenses, boating, RV, whatever it may be, has a fee to it. That's not any way, shape, or form shown here. We're letting them get it carte blanche, and then on top of that, we're chasing away our families, 'cause do you really think people are gonna wanna bring their families here to grow, knowing that the next-door neighbor grows pot and the one next to him grows pot? I don't know, it just doesn't make sense to me. That's my two cents.
Okay, well, if we get permits, everybody'll know everywhere who's growing pot, where it's inside or outside or whatever, so that...
No, I agree with that.
No, I mean, so people are gonna know. Secondly, to me, the outdoor cultivation is in an, my thought on it, is in an enclosed, like greenhouse, and to me, that's much better than having inside the house where little Suzie's gonna open the door and go in there when 5,000 watts, I'm getting a little, you know, of electricity's gonna be shining down on a room, and it could be overcharged, and that's just my opinion, and you know, kids like inside the house could, who knows, walk in that room and get a contact tie or whatever. So, that's my opinion. My opinion is to let them grow it outside in an enclosed greenhouse like a lot of people do with orchids or whatever. So, that's what, to me, the outdoor means, in an enclosed, like greenhouse. I don't know if, is that what you guys meant by... No.
Well, no, the way we have this, the way we have this ordinance fashioned is that we do allow in an accessory structure, so that is in an outbuilding that's fully enclosed, 120 square feet or under it could be done in, but we're also allowing it specifically outdoors as well to be in a container no greater than 25, so that is not in an enclosed structure.
I'm...
We're essentially, sorry, allowing it in three areas, inside the main structure, inside an accessory structure, and then also outdoors in a 25-gallon container or less.
Well...
So, that's what...
They grow better in the indoor greenhouses, so my opinion would be just do the greenhouses and the, I guess, indoors since we have no choice with that one, so that's my opinion.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, there's no permit?
No permit.
In this ordinance? Okay. And then I also am not comfortable with the open outdoor, because I believe you can even smell one or two plants, and I've been around neighborhoods covering, even I covered a fire and somebody around there was growing, we could tell. So, it is very pugnant, so I would also like to go with the indoor and the outdoor greenhouse.
You'll smell it even with a greenhouse? I mean, you have to vent it. You'll smell it even outdoors in the accessory structure, if that, even indoors in accessory structure, there's a smell, I mean...
There are filters they can use for the venting.
Pardon?
There's filters they can use for the venting, which the other cities have put in place.
And one other thing that we said about permits is, you know, as Laurie said way back when, you know, getting these permits, you know, you can get the permits, but who's really gonna go get a permit?
And it's public knowledge then.
And how are we gonna, what do you...
It's public knowledge then.
Yeah, it's public knowledge, but how are we gonna keep an eye on whatever's going on? 'Cause we know that we've got permits all over town, which we can't, we can't go in and see that people are doing what they're supposed to be doing, we just don't have the wherewithal or the manpower to do that, so...
Chris, is the garage portion of the home considered part of the main structure?
It can be, yes.
So, that would be the main, that would be a main structure?
Correct.
So, it's possible that they could grow in their garage?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, as long as, there's certain areas of town that require a two-car garage, so they wouldn't, if they were eating up the two-car garage component, they wouldn't be able to do that.
Well, the city requires a two-car garage, it doesn't say you have to park your car in it.
Correct.
So, they put it in the driveway.
And we wouldn't know what they're doing in there.
Exactly.
Okay, and any more discussion?
So, do we wanna amend the...
Yeah, you can do the motion with...
Public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry, public comment, oops. Public comment? Didn't have any, didn't have any speaker sheets, so...
Public hearing, great.
Do you have any public comment?
Well, I'm glad to see you all here. I've listened very carefully to your opening statement, Councilman Cruz, and I did not hear one word in the statement that would be affected negatively by following the will of the voters of California. Frankly, I almost find your idea that Galt will become a magnet laughable. Galt has not become a magnet for cigarette smokers when we opened up the new smoke shop. Galt has not become a magnet for alcoholics when we opened up a new liquor store or a bar. So, the idea that Galt is going to become a magnet for marijuana growers because we have a little bit different law is really, stretches credulity. Let's leave it at that. One thing, and I wish I had been able to tell you this earlier, I have been here for all of the meetings, I've been here for the Planning Commission meeting. I would like to point out, because it wasn't mentioned, at the Planning Commission meeting, there were three of us here speaking in favor of following the draft ordinance, there was no opposition. Not one person came out to speak in opposition of that. So, it seems to me that people are recognizing that this is a fairly straightforward thing. Once again, my hat is off to Chief Sockman and his troops, they are doing such a great job working with the community, so I really, there are certain communities that are having an antagonistic relationship with law enforcement, and I'm glad that we're not one of them. I told you before that I had been following different cities, that count is now up to 36. It was 17 the last time, it's now 36. I still say that of the 36 ordinances and draft ordinances that I've read, that the city of Galt has the best one, and I'd like to leave it on this. There's a lot of problems with growing indoors that the council has rightly brought up, jacking of electricity, degradation of the houses, water overflowing and possibly causing rot and those kinda things. And I'm part of a Facebook group that, we have a person in every community, and I'm happy to be the representative for the city of Galt and pass along any news that I can to the fellow members of that group, and we cover from one end of the state to the other. And somebody said something, and I wish I had had it earlier because it just encapsulates this whole thing. Houses are meant to sleep in, to live in, run a small business out of. Backyards are made to grow flowers in. We're talking about a flower. We are. I understand your background and why you would be a little hesitant to maybe go along with this, but I really would urge you to think twice, think about the laws of the state of California now, and like I mentioned before, think about being on the right side of history. I urge a yes vote on what I see as the best ordinance that I've seen in the state of California. I thank you all for your time and your effort that has gone into this. Thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else that wishes to comment before I close the session? Okay, I'm gonna close the public session. Laurie, you look like you were gonna say something, or are you just adjusting your microphone?
No.
Okay.
I, you know, we discussed this at the last, well, we discussed it twice at two separate council meetings. I am told... I, I am totally in favor of allowing outdoor grow because I truly believe that, you know, indoor grows, I actually believe if we could encourage people to grow outdoors, that we would have less issues with indoor grows. There was a major fire in Elk Grove caused from an indoor grow just recently. It went before the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission passed it unanimously. There was no opposition at the Planning Commission. The last meeting that we discussed it, there was no opposition. You know, there's going to be odor. I think that that, when the voters approve this, I think you kind of know that even if you're growing it inside your house, you can smell it. I just would really like to see people not growing it inside their homes, so if we can encourage them to cultivate it outside. I also do not believe that we're going to be attracting marijuana growers. I think we're going to find more attraction or places like City of Sacramento where they're going to be having major manufacturing of marijuana cultivation and sales. You know, I'm still, you know, I don't, I'm not in favor of opening up any dispensaries, though, as we said, we have, we have wineries, we court wineries to open up tasting rooms, we have gun shops, we have tobacco shops, we have all of these things. We have children in homes where there's alcohol and, and prescription drugs, and we don't regulate that. But for some reason, because it's cannabis, we all of a sudden want to respond to it differently than we do other, other issues inside people's homes. So I actually am in favor of the ordinance as it stands and think that it is a good compromise. And as I've said before, this is all going to be a learning in a year from now or in the future. If we want to change this, it's all, it's all changeable. But I think as it stands right now, I, I don't think, I think it's really interesting that the, the guy over in the parking lot over behind the gun shop sells wine barrels? He said he can't keep them in stock. He was selling so many wine barrels. He didn't really know why he was selling so many wine barrels all of a sudden. I can pretty much say why he's selling so many wine barrels, because people are growing it outside already.
Is that a motion then, Lori?
Yeah, I would motion to keep the ordinance as, as it stands.
I'm going to second it. So, been moved and seconded by Huer and...
As, as it stands?
As it stands.
Outdoor grow.
Yes. Okay, call for the vote, please?
Discussion.
Okay, discussion.
You know, I, I've kind of gone back and forth on allowing the outdoor grow versus the indoor grow. And, and I, and I hear what Lori's saying, I understand what you, you believe, Mary Lou, and I understand what you're saying, Mark. But I think what bothers me more than anything is that we have a state law that's in conflict with federal law. And that bothers me, that, that the voters have enacted something, not the legislature, that is in direct conflict with federal law. So I, and then I, you know, I tried to reconcile, I think it would be better to have an outdoor grow because of the concerns of, you know, an indoor grow. I don't think it's conducive for that. I mean, you have a few plants in your house, but you don't do, you know, major grows. And I understand from those people who want to grow them, it is cheaper, more economical to have an outdoor grow. But when it comes right down to it, I, I think where I, I draw the line is that, that what we have as a state law now is in conflict with federal law. And therefore, I will go with what minimally is allowed, and that is the indoor grow.
Okay, but, okay.
You want to amend it?
No, I, no, there's a motion and a second.
Call for the vote? Are you, anybody else?
I would, I would make a second motion to the effect of what Councilman Campion just said.
Can we go for the first?
No, actually, you can do both.
We do the second one first?
I would do the, since you have the motion and there's one second.
Right. The first one first.
It would be cleaner if you did it that way and had the vote, and then you could have a second.
No, actually...
Call for the vote, please?
Vice Mayor Cruz?
No.
Councilmember Huer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
No.
Councilmember Lamson?
No.
Mayor Powers?
Aye. Okay, do I have any, that was not passed, three to zero, two. And do I have another motion?
I motion let the ordinance be modified for indoor grow only.
An outdoor in a shed?
Going again?
Outbuildings as well, but nothing in the...
Okay, so you're having the outdoor...
Outdoor structure.
All right.
Second?
Okay.
Does that make sense before we go with it?
Yeah, I, basically, we had, I guess, three options there. One, you know, the outdoor grow in a container, so we know that's not what you're looking at. Basically, growing inside a, you know, main structure, and then also in an accessory structure. And that is similar to the other cities that was presented.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, do I have a, a new second?
Discussion?
Okay.
I just, well, I just think that, again, as we've done in the past, we're making, you know, people who are law-abiding citizens who grow marijuana for recreational purposes, making them into criminals, who don't want to put the marijuana inside their home with the watering, with the electrical, you know, and, and maybe can't afford the accessory structures. Because a lot of people purchase marijuana from dispensaries. I mean, people that can afford it are buying it from dispensaries. Either they are buying it from a medical marijuana dispensary, or as the recreational becomes avail, more available, they'll, you know. And so now people, we are now discriminating against people who need to take the most economical way in which to acquire marijuana. And so I just, I don't agree with the fact of not allowing people to do it with, what comes most naturally, and that are that plants grow outside. I don't think it's as easy to grow as everybody, you know, makes it out to grow, so I don't, I think that a lot of people will continue to, but we have a lot of people that are growing it outdoors now, and there aren't any problems, aren't any issues. And so again, we, you know, try to make criminals out of people who are law-abiding citizens.
Well...
And we did that way back when it was just medicinal, we had that.
I, I look at it a little differently because the definition of accessory structure is not hard and fast.
But if somebody's in a small home, or they don't have the setbacks...
You take four four-by-fours and put a roof on it and a wood floor, that could be defined as an accessory structure.
Well, that's usually what a greenhouse is, with some stuff around.
Doesn't even have to have a wood floor, does it?
I don't know that it has to have wa, it has to have walls. I mean, when it comes right down to it, I don't know that it is defined as a, an enclosed space. Chris? Nor does it define what the enclosure consists of in terms of material. So I, even, even, you know, I, I still think people could, if they're creative enough and have done it in the past, they will continue to be creative.
Agreed. Okay, so anyone else? Okay, so Lori, do you mind just repeating what you...
No, I didn't. I didn't make a motion.
I'm the one with the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mark. Okay, and do we have, I have a second?
And that motion included, that motion included all of the other regulations with regarding...
Correct. Just the one modification. Everything else I'm okay with.
That, that is what I just wanted to clarify, was that the motion was just to amend the section 18.58.0.30 regarding outdoor cultivation.
Correct.
Correct? Okay.
Well, but you said the accessory thing could be there, correct?
Right.
Okay, well, we're, we're getting a little A, B, and C, so just making sure one and two then. Hey, do I have a second? Okay, Lamson with second. Call for the vote, please?
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Huer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye. Okay. I'll go back to my page, hold on a second. Okay, now we're right down to Human Resources, accept the Coffin and Associates classification and compensation study for representative and unrepresented employees, and adopt a resolution, updated job descriptions, reclassification, and job title changes based on the recommendations of the Coffin Associates Classification and Compensation Study.
Easy for you to say.
There you are, Steve.
Here I am.
Ready to go.
Thank you, Ma, Mayor, and members of the council. Before I get into the particulars of the staff report, there are a couple of preliminary parts, pieces of information I'd like to convey. First, we have in the audience this afternoon Tamika Usher from Coffin Associates, and she's right here, so if there are any technical questions that arise about a job classification, she likely will be able to respond to that. I'd like to extend my appreciation to her as the project manager and to Coffin Associates. This work is not easy to do. It's very labor-intensive, requires a tremendous amount of energy and effort on their part, and they did a really quality job, so I want to extend my appreciation to them for a very difficult, time-consuming project. So we, we appreciate what they, what they have done, and they're still available to us as we go through the next phases of implementation. What I'd like to say before I get into the particulars of the report is as follows. There seems to be some ongoing misunderstanding among the various groups in the organization about what is before the council today, and I want to take a moment to clarify some of those. If the council is inclined to improve the resolution, it does not, it only addresses a very small portion of the Classification and Compensation Study. As it relates to the compensation side, those issues are going to be handled through the collective bargaining process, and they're not being, obviously, being unilaterally done. There seems to be an understanding among some in the organization that if the council acts today, it precludes any further work, and all of the recommendations on the compensation side are going to be implemented, and that's simply not the case. Again, we work pursuant to the Myers-Millias-Brown Act, which requires, among other things, that issues with regard to wages, hours, and conditions of employment are subject to collective bargaining, and that is the direction that this is going to, going to, to go in. With that, what you have before you is a request for us to do four basic things. First is to acknowledge receipt of the report. Second is to approve the job descriptions as presented by Coffin Associates. Third is to approve the reclassification requests that have been recommended to us by our consultant. And fourth is to implement a number of job title changes. I'd like to speak for just a moment about the reclassification request because there's been some questions raised to me about them. By definition, under our person, city's personnel rules, a reclassification means that the employee, after appropriate management review, has been determined that they're actually performing job tasks that are way outside of their current job classification, and that it's incumbent upon the, the management of the organization to rectify those situations. That's what our personnel rules speak to. When it came to our attention that we had several of these reclassifications, it was my judgment that it was prudent, for a variety of reasons, that we move forward with them at this point in time, rather than waiting for the collective bargaining process to, to, to take route. The reason for that is, is that we create certain risk and liability to the organization because now we know that the employees are, in fact, acting out of class. We know that the employees have not received appropriate additional compensation for that. We know that that creates a risk for the organization in terms of claims of back wages and certain enforcement action by state or federal enforcement agencies. That is not a good place for the city to be. So hence, it was my judgment that it was appropriate at this point in time to bring those forward for council consideration. That is the reason why they are included here today. With respect to some of the details in the report, I'd like to call your attention to Table 1, which is on the third page, I believe it's the third page of the staff report. A couple of adjustments that I want to bring to council's attention that should be reflected in whatever resolution the council is, is of a mind to adopt. I made a mistake in indicating that the pay grade for the police dispatcher going to evidence and property technician was pay grade G-19, and that should be G-16. That is an error on my part solely. The other thing I'd like to bring to council's attention is that I did not include in Table 1 what the actual dollar value of those recommended pay grades are. I believe that you have our salary schedules in front of you, and they are available here for the public to review, but if you'd like, I would just like to take a moment to read into the record what those pay ranges currently are, if I have your permission to do that. So with respect to pay grade 42, the salary range is 36.03 a month to 43.80 per month. Pay grade 62 is 59.02 to 71.74 per month, and pay grade 51 is 44.97 to 54.67 per month. By way of clarification, I'd like to explain why in certain instances there are recommendations for new pay grades and why in other instances they are not. Where you see a recommendation for a new pay grade, what it means is that we do not currently have an established pay rate, pay grade for that particular classification. And in order to compensate the employees for work that they're performing within the proposed classification, council needs to establish pay grades. In other instances, where the recommendation is to reclassify an employee from an existing current job classification to one that currently exists, there is no need for me to make a recommendation for a new pay grade because it already exists. So if there's any questions about that, I would be happy to further clarify that. The one other clarification is that we noted in the staff report that the annualized cost was $77,000, round numbers. In actual, in actuality, it's $73,472. And again, remember, those are annualized total compensation costs. Those aren't base pay adjustments. And just kind of keep in mind is that when you, when you do an adjustment of base pay, it does sort of spill over to certain other forms of compensation that roll, that roll off of that. So what we have before you is a, is a lengthy staff report, basically, which asks you to do four things, is to accept the report with the understanding that this is simply phase one, and that it is reasonable and appropriate for the council to expect that in the weeks and months ahead, you will receive individualized requests to make adjustments to either a job description, job title, things along those lines. And my view on that is that those are good things to happen. The classification plan is a living, breathing, organic document. It's not something that's etched in stone. To keep it fresh, to keep it vital, it has to be maintained. So within the Galt system, personal management system, there are certain actions which the council is authorized to take upon presentation by staff for substantial amendments to job descriptions, job title changes. And I'm quite certain that in the weeks and months ahead, that you will see some of those. And my view, for what it's worth, is those are good things and not bad things to, to occur. This is not a nice, neat little box with a nice bow on top of it. This, this is the culmination of months of work that has many, many moving parts to it, particularly as it relates to, to the job descriptions. So the four actions are, you, request that you acknowledged, or acknowledged the report, and that the resolution that you have would authorize you to implement the reclassification requests, the job title changes that are recommended, and to adopt the job descriptions as they have been presented to you. Again, with the one adjustment noting that the correct pay grade for evidence and property tech should be G-13, G-16, and not G-19. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that, that you may have about this.
Thank you, council.
So when the studies, so when the study's done, so the employees, Coff did the study, and the employees said what their duties were, and so these reclassifications, is it because the duties they were doing is of a higher classification than what they're currently working in? Or is it because those duties fit... Or is it because those duties fit that classification better?
The process that resulted in Coffin Associates' recommendations was based upon a review of the duties, responsibilities, and tasks that all the employees were performing. Employees were requested to submit what's called a position classification questionnaire, which was reviewed by their supervisor, by their management, and where necessary, staff from Coffin Associates did conduct a desk audit for verification. The short answer to your question, what it means is for the reclassification is that they're simply doing duties that are outside the scope of their current job classification, which merits a reclassification.
So it was never that we, that as an organization, or that their supervisor officially said, "You're going to do the duties of an account manager even though you're only a deputy finance director." I mean, it wasn't like it was ever officially done and the employee wasn't paid. I mean, I've worked in out-of-class situations where I officially was out of class.
Yeah.
Everybody knew I was out of class, and I was out of class.
Right.
None of these were ever officially out of class. They were just employees who, maybe because they were great employees, got more and more duties, and then eventually end up doing duties that put them out of class.
Well, no good deed goes unpunished. My sense here is that there was no intent to, if you will, sort of manipulate a job classification system for purposes of upgrading an individual for reasons other than what they're actually performing. You know, we're, this is a small agency, and employees are often asked to do lots of things that sometimes are, or sometimes are not, related to their principal job duties. In the cases of these recommendations, it's simply because these employees have to thorough management review, or performing duties outside of their classification. And from an HR perspective, I absolutely believe that these are things that must be adjusted, and they ought to be adjusted sooner rather than later, for the reasons that I previously explained.
So, and this might not be a question you can answer, so if these employees were, if those duties were taken away that put them outside of, out of class, that make them working out of class, so are those duties that, as an organization, we need to be having performed? So somebody has to do them, correct? I mean, what I'm saying is, you know, if you're working out of class, and they say, "No, you're going to go back and work in what your classification is instead of adjusting it."
Some duties would go undone.
Yeah, there would be duties that would go undone, correct?
Correct.
Because somebody still needs to do the duties that are in that classification. Am I making the right assumption?
You're absolutely on point.
Okay.
You're on point.
Okay.
Which I think is what you said, right?
Councilmember Campion, positions do evolve. Positions change over time. You know, when you adopt a job description, it's not like you're etching it, you know, in stone. You're not. That's why it's on paper, not stone. Because over time, jobs change. Technology changes jobs, service delivery considerations change jobs. All of those things come into play. And if, what I would suggest to you as you move forward, if you're not receiving requests in the future to make changes to some of the things that you have before you, you know, I think you've got to ask appropriate questions of staff as to why is that not going to happen?
Yeah, we're not progressing, it sounds like.
Well, to meet the expectations of the public, to meet the expectations of delivering quality services to the community, we have to make sure that the job classification system is a living, breathing, organic management process. And that's what this is about. And again, as I said to staff, as we move forward with this, if the council adopts the resolution with the amendment in it, then you need to ensure that staff is appropriately making sure that this is a living, breathing, changing document. Last comment I just want to make that I failed to address has to do, again, with extending appreciation to the employees of this organization. We've tried to approach the rollout of this study from as transparent a way as we can figure out how to do. So we've made available to, and have met with the labor groups as well as the unrepresented employees, to provide information, to explain what this action means, to explain what's going to come after this action. And their cooperation in this process to this point has been fabulous. It's appreciated. That doesn't mean we see the world the same way, and I suspect as we move forward, we will have some very, very interesting conversations with the employee groups as we get to the implementation phase of the compensation portion.
So my final question, Mr. Harmon, is, and Mr. Palazzo, so we reclassify these individuals into the new positions. We won't be backfilling back into, so if somebody's classification's changed, we're not, there won't be any new positions, any more hires within the old classification? I mean, there will still be hires, but I mean, it won't be a backfill situation.
No, you're, I.
It's just a reclassification.
It's a reclassification.
No more, not.
Yeah, I think that's what it says.
Yeah.
They're just reclassifying some of them.
Well, I know, but I've also seen where they reclassify, and then the old position stays there, and I just want to make sure that that's not what's happening.
I mean, there may be requests for additional staff down the road, but I don't think they will arise because of any of the proposed reclassifications. They'll arise when staff believes that they need extra hands to deliver the work that needs to get done. And you'll have to evaluate those against the facts and circumstances at a present at the time when you get those kinds of requests through a budget process.
Okay, anyone else?
So, to clarify, all the employees have had the opportunity to look at the study, and they had opportunity to go talk to their supervisors that they had issues?
That's correct.
Okay.
And just to amplify on that, all the employees who either have job title changes or reclassification requests were notified of that back in January of 2017. So they've kind of patiently waited to see what's going to happen. So just, you kind of understand that throughout this entire process, the one hallmark, and this is a credit to Coffin Associates, was been the tremendous amount of transparency that has been built into what is an extraordinarily difficult, cumbersome, and complex set of actions.
Well, I do want to really thank Coffin Associates for that, and out in public too. I want to thank you for all of your hard work. You're a consultant that, to me, taught me a lot while we're going through this, and I really wanted to let you know that I appreciated that.
Thank you. I appreciate hearing that very much. Thank you.
Okay, council, anything else? Do I have a motion? Motion? What, you want to read, should we read? Motion, do I have a motion? Do you want to read it, Donna, please?
The recommendation, accept the classification and compensation study prepared by Coffin Associates, and adopt a resolution updating job descriptions and approving the recommended job reclassifications and job title changes.
And the changes.
With the amended.
G-16 for G-19. Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Lamson, Campion, call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Powers.
Aye, approve five to zero.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, and thank you for coming. Now, onto the Finance Department. Emily, the Cost Allocation Plan Study Report.
Actually, Mayor, before Emily starts out, I'm going to kind of chime in and say a few words to the council on this cost allocation plan. And can it take us back to our last strategic planning meeting, and kind of my, working with the council and building sustainability for the city? The cost allocation plan is one of those documents that we identified as where we wanted to take a look at and see where we're at. Other items, you know, in that discussion included our class and comp study that we just talked about. We talked about lighting and landscape districts, which will be coming, you know, before the council at our next meeting. And we're also, we'll be talking about our wastewater cost, or service study, you know, that we're working on. So a lot of these studies are, you know, kind of coming, you know, to a culmination of understanding where we're at with the city. Yet tonight, or this afternoon, on the cost allocation plan, you know, a completed study of the cost allocation mythology hasn't been conducted since 1993. And over the years, adjustments of the study that we've been working with have been made. And to my knowledge, you know, it's been 24 years since we really took a look at, you know, the dynamics of how we're doing this. And so it's expected that our ship has veered off course, you know, over the years, you know, with the study, or with, you know, our process and how our mythology's been doing this. The mythology used in the current study differs somewhat from how we've done it in the past, and Ms. Boyd and the consultant's going to talk about that this evening. And, you know, there's really no right or wrong way of doing these studies. However, you need to understand the mythology on how we do this. And, you know, what we're trying to do is, you know, take a look at the transparent and really simplifying, you know, the way we're doing our cost allocation within the city. So, you know, Emily will be discussing that. The results are a little surprising, and you're going to, they show that the general fund will lose revenue from other funds of about 1.6 million. And we're going to discuss that. And this is kind of a significant hurdle, you know, for the general fund, and it's not going to be easy to, you know, make that up. And over the next couple of years, probably five years, you know, we're going to really have to take a look at how we're doing business, and, you know, focus on, you know, our programs and operations, you know, so we can, you know, kind of bring in that sustainability. Boyd's going to talk about, a little bit about our budget on where we're at, you know, towards the end of the presentation. I think our ship is sinking, but we do need to be mindful of, you know, this course and direction, you know, that we're going. So, Ms. Boyd?
That was quite the introduction.
It was, wasn't it?
Good afternoon, Mayor Powers, members of the council. Emily Boyd, Finance Director. Good to be here this afternoon, and I appreciate all of you having the patience and the time to go through this. It's a fairly complex subject, and I'm happy to take questions today, or our consultant will take questions on the study that you might have about how it works. Just before I introduce him, I wanted to just talk about a couple of different things. One of the things that we are doing in our proposed 1718 budget is that we are moving, wherever possible, we're moving direct costs to the fund or department or program that is utilizing that particular service. And along with that, what we've done is we've set up a charge-back system whereby public works employees, engineers, planning planners, would be able to directly charge their time for any project-specific work that they do directly to that project. That will, is a process that will happen through the payroll module. So what we have done is tried to isolate direct costs from indirect costs. And so direct costs, wherever possible, are being directly charged, and indirect costs are the subject of the cost allocation plan. And our consultant will talk about central services versus operating services or operating departments, and kind of explain that to you. Central services are the ones that get allocated. Those are indirect costs. And I think one other final thing that I wanted to say is that this is a plan that is a methodology that differs from the prior methodology in that it uses objective bases for allocation, as opposed to the subjective basis in the prior plan, which was based upon individuals tracking time and submitting that and so forth. We're accounting for time that's specific through the payroll process that I just described. The city contracted with Wildan Financial Services to conduct a study and develop an allocation model for us. At the conclusion of the study, they will be giving us that model. It's an Excel spreadsheet. It's a thing of beauty, if you like Excel and complicated spreadsheets. You love this one. But we will have possession of that so that we can update it each year as budgets are developed. And then my recommendation would be that, in an appropriate period of time, three to five years, whatever we determine, and the council and staff determine, we again do another cost allocation study to see if we are still on course. So, since, I want to just say that Wildan Financial Services has been providing financial consulting services to local governments since 1964. Their areas of expertise include not just cost allocation plans, but user fee studies, utility rate studies, and other financial studies for municipal governments, where they bring a wealth of experience to this project. So the consultant today that I would like to introduce to you is Mr. Tony Thrasher from Wildan Financial Services.
Thank you, Emily. Great introductions in both councils. Thank you, Mayor, council, for your time. It's right here. Thank you. So, we're here to talk about cost allocation plans. I am Tony Thrasher, so I'm the project manager. We have, there's a lot of people on the team, but the kind of two other primary people were my boss, Chris Fisher, our division manager, as well as the analyst that I work most closest with, is Priti Patel. She does the most of the work, right? And I just kind of come here and talk, right? So what is a cost allocation plan? Cost allocation plans, the purpose is to allocate indirect and facility cost for which you don't, you can't directly charge, right? So we think of your central services, yourself, city manager, clerk, all those kind of things. We want to create a reasonable and equitable allocation to your operating functions, and we want to be able to account for it throughout the entire process, so we can show exactly why things are going where, and there's a reason why, right? So, the actual model itself is just a tool for facilitating that and showing what those calculations are, and how it kind of flows through, and how those allocations come to be. The allocations themselves should represent how support's being provided, or another way of saying is how the operating departments are placing burdens on your central services, right? Caps are used for a number of different reasons. Personnel rates for, say, user fee cost recovery, cost reimbursement through, you know, other kind of fund activity. I'll talk a bit about O and B compliance for federal grant or state funding that you might want to do. There's a number of reasons why you might do it, but it just, keep in mind, it's just to represent the burden or allocation that your central services are kind of providing to your departments. So, in order to build this thing up, we evaluate the costs of your central services, your operating departments. We want to look at kind of each line item within your budget to determine what are the allocable costs, what should be allocated out, and what represents those indirect and facility costs that can be recovered. So we identify what those central services are, as well as what their major functions are, so that we can then look for data sets such as FTEs, budget, as a means to showing how support is being provided. So if you think of human resources, and I'll give more examples later, but human resources, the more personnel you have in a department, the more support is being provided to that department by human resources, right? So just kind of think of it along those kind of lines of how this is formulated. So then the model takes that information and allocates those costs. So, take the budgetary and finance data, we collect, we determine what your central services, those functions are, and determine those data sets that we can use to allocate those costs. The model just kind of turns that all out. So if you think of your city structure, you have your central services providing support to the departments. And within those central services, like finance, for example, you have multiple functions that they're providing. So the budgets, accounts payable, payroll, right? Those can all be parts of it, so you'll see that each one has different functions that we identify and attribute certain distribution bases to it, so that we can then facilitate those allocations. So the objectives, and I'm going to say it a few different ways, just because it can be a little dense, right? So, the objectives are to make sure that we work with staff to understand the unique nature of your city. And I'm running a few pages behind on my own, but, because each city is unique. It has its own characteristics. If I look at a city clerk of one city, it doesn't match the city clerk of another. It just, it never is apples to apples. So we want to look at what those costs are, talk with your staff, and thanks, apparently, Emily and Matt for all their help. It's definitely a great burden upon their time, but they provide a lot of information to us so that we can understand exactly how you operate, right? So, we identify what those objectives, challenges are that you have within your own city. Kind of, it was mentioned, it's been a while since you've had kind of a look at this and exactly how it's formulated. So things have obviously changed over time. So the new kind of cost allocation plan just represents where you're at now, it's not a reflection of where you've been, right? So, through the cap, we identify what those defensible allocations should be through using the distribution data. We talk to your staff about exactly, does this make sense using this data set? Is this showing what you think it is? If we are doing an allocation on some data set, but it ends up looking like it, doesn't represent exactly how they provide support at all, then we look at using something else that does make sense, right? Because it should kind of pass a smell test, it should also look like it makes sense as well. A cost allocation plan by its nature is inexact. That's why you're not direct charging it, right? So that's why you just want to make sure it's reasonable, and it does make sense from a functional standpoint, and that the allocations make sense based off of how that support's being provided. Now, the deliverables of this entire study is that custom model, so that staff can load in new budgets. I'm always available, so Emily could always contact me and let me know if she has any questions, if something's not. If something's not working, then I can fix it, that's no problem. I do that for a number of clients. And it's quick and easy, usually within a day, we can turn something around and get it right back to you. So the model, a report that contains an allocation, I'll mention this in a few seconds, but there's two plans, an OMB plan and a full plan, as well as a report that has that, and obviously the presentation today, right? So, we have the kickoff discussion where we talk briefly about those kind of, those kind of hurdles that you have going forward, how we want to address certain things that you have going on with your city, gather the data, and talk to your staff about the data. We pour through the budget, line by line, identifying what's allocable. We review what you currently have as allocations, to see kind of where you're going as opposed to where you've been, so that you can then plan out exactly how it's going to affect your general fund and your operations, right? And then we identify what those central support functions are, so then we can then identify how they provide that support. And through the entire process, it's, there's data that we collect that we don't use because it doesn't make sense. There's data that we collect that we end up relying on heavily because it does make the most sense, but it's, there, this process, I think, we've been going on for quite a few months now. It doesn't completely tie to this timeline, because we kind of came to a point where we had availability of the 1718 budget. So we loaded in that new information to make sure that you are the most current on it. So, and we'll have a couple tables, we'll, some clerical errors on there that kind of resulted as of, because of that. But, just so you know, you are up to date on the 1718 budget data as opposed to the 1617 when we first started this process. So, as I mentioned, the report and the model contains two cost allocation plans. One is an OMB compliant, and the other one is a, we call a full plan. Now, the full plan you would use for budgeting, allocation to funds, user fees, most your kind of activities. But if you are receiving federal grants or certain state funding, they might have a requirement for a super or omni-circular compliant cap, which also adheres to the two CFR 200 cost principles. And essentially what it is, is they say, there's certain costs we don't want our grant funding to pay for, because either it's general government, like yourself, it's going to exist whether or not you have departments that are kind of providing the support, and there's other things as well, advertising lobbying costs, contingencies, idle capacity litigation, and there's a number of different ones. But in essence, if there are need for specific costs, they just say, direct charge those, and have a reason for it, as opposed to using them in the cost allocation. That's really why they're kind of cut out. So, the model provides both. What you're going to see here is the full plan. It's not the OMB plan, because that's what you're going to typically use for most purposes. Now, the model uses what's called an iterative allocation approach, and I've tried to explain this a number of different ways. It is the most accurate and equitable. It is recommended by OMB because it maintains its allocation methodology throughout the entire process. What it does is it identifies those distribution bases that I mentioned to allocate the cost of the central service as a kind of first step allocation. Now, each central service also provides support to each other. So there's an, there's an amount of costs that then remains with the central service. So what the model does is just re-does the allocation of those costs over and over until nothing remains with the central services, like a waterfall hitting the rocks on the way down. There's still allocable costs when you allocate central service to central service, but, so we just want to make sure that it goes all the way, it kind of filters down to the operating departments in full. Now, what that mean, and I'll get to that in a little bit, but what it means is that when I show you what the allocable cost is, it's going to match to what the allocations are, because nothing kind of remains with the central service that is allowable to be allocated out. So, the allocation bases that are used for each central service are unique to that central service, as I said a few dozen times probably already now, but here's an example of some of them, right? So, as I mentioned, human resources is largely a reflection of personnel. So we have a number of positions or FTEs, as well as salaries and benefits being used to allocate that cost. And, you know, so, we talked with staff to see what kind of made the most sense when you look at the way that those costs were being allocated and how support's being provided. And here's just a snapshot, the report has a detail of all of them. Here's a summary of your central services and the amount of costs that they've allocated. There are some costs that were deemed unallocable, either because they were, typically it's ISF costs, direct charges, capital debt, things that can't be allocated, that shouldn't be allocated on a normal basis, just, or that should be kind of direct charge. If you look at the OMB chart, it'll have greater amounts in that unallocable costs, notably on the city council line, and the planning commission, because those can't be allocated at all. And so, here's where we have that clerical error, the fiscal year 201617, that should read 1718. So that's just an error on my part, doesn't affect the actual analysis, because as you'll see in the next chart, we are using the 1718 budget in that third column over. I know it's hard to read, it's also in the report as well, but this is where the costs go from those central services, and that's how they're allocated out. So this is kind of the result, and so, as was mentioned, more costs are being allocated to the general fund, which means less is coming from your other funds. So, if you see kind of anything that is startling, this is a measure of burden, not a measure of what you can collect, that's kind of what a cap is. It's just showing what that is, not what you can actually pull from funds or grants or anything like that. That's usually on an individual nature that you determine that. So, as Emily mentioned, I'm here to answer any questions that you might have about the allocation, the methodology, or anything else that you kind of have in mind too.
I know that we, the prior allocation was, as was noted earlier, was more subjective in terms of the way it was prepared. And this, you know, comes up with a more objective and quantifiable methodology. But I guess the question is, it's a significant shift in terms of what can be allocated to the general fund and what cannot. So my question is, is there a, is there a middle road in order to implement this? Or is it, you know, do it all at once, and that's, that's the way it has to be done? Or can it be, you know, phased in over time? And if so, how would that be accomplished?
From what I've heard from kind of multiple jurisdictions that kind of encounter this kind of thing where you're going through a large change, is you might do a transition if it is going to be a severe impact on your general fund. Now, as far as middle of the road goes, it's more of just going through the full transition, because what you have is a resulting cost allocation plan that says what the burden is. So you can't really go halfway without actually having the goal of going all the way, you know, at some point in time. So I would say you want to go as quickly as possible, as long as you don't severely impact your operations, right? And as I mentioned, it's a measure of burden, not a measure of what you can collect. So it's not saying you have to collect something, it's just you can't shift that cost onto someone else as a result, right?
I see.
Can you do me a favor and just explain total allocation, direct cost base, and the percentage?
Yes.
I'm kind of not getting that, sorry.
Sure. So, the total allocation, it ties to what was being allocated. So, total allocation matches allocable costs, I, these terms, I get tripped up too. So the 4.6 million there matches the 4.6 million here. The next cost is showing what the direct cost base is. So this is, the, OMB terms is the modified total direct cost. So this excludes capital debt and any cost items that severely inflate showing support being provided to a department. So if you were to have a massive contract that doesn't represent how support's provided, we would pull that out. But for the most part, we don't have that in here, so this is just pulling out capital and debt. That's why you see a lot of zeros for the CIP funds.
Okay, so like, just say, the building, safety, and inspection service, we allocate $85,000 to this line item. But they're really doing $403,000 of allocated costs?
Well, so that is their department budget.
Okay.
So that represents what their actual personnel cost, as well as their operation cost is.
Okay.
And the reason why that is shown there is so that we can calculate the indirect rate, which is in that next column, and what, so, if you think of a user fee study, what you would do is develop user, fully burdened hourly rates, and so you would have a salary and benefit and materials rate for your personnel, and then, building and safety would also have a 21% cost added to that, because that represents the allocation from central services. So that's really what that indirect cost rate is. And it's also used for cost reimbursement for funding. So if you have a fund that allows cost reimbursement from some, whatever reason, then that is their administrative overhead as well.
Okay, kind of, could you give me a reason? Let's say, building, safety, and it's, what would a...
Sure. So if you think of building permits, so if someone has a $100 hourly rate that encompasses their salary and benefits, as well as the operational cost of the department, their, that department still has an additional 21% cost through the cost allocation plan, because that is a burden that they place upon the central services, so that rate would go to $121 as opposed to staying to, at 100. So when you devise your user fees, they would then incorporate that cost allocation. It's not what you have to charge, though, it just represents what the total cost is.
Okay.
Following up on that, for those individual, for those departments that are not a central service, I, I had some discussion with Emily earlier, the city could look at and should be looking at direct charges, is that correct?
Yes.
To help, to help offset the burden on the general fund, and to allocate those costs appropriately to whatever fund source that department or individual is benefiting, is that correct?
That's correct. Direct charges are always going to be more precise and more reasonable or equitable correct, in essence, than a cost allocation plan. This is kind of, if you can't, if you don't have a means to direct charge, then you use a cap.
But you could use the direct charge in combination with the CAP, right?
As long as they're not representing the same support. So, if, I'm trying to think, here's an example here. If you were to have a, let's see, for an internal service fund for information technology that was charging out based off of a number of IT, you know, issues that came out, or something of that sort, then that can kind of, it's not direct charging, but it is a more precise methodology where you actually have time tracked, or you have some method that, within your system, that charges that directly to those departments and funds, as opposed to using a cost allocation plan to charge it out.
Okay. Thank you. Excuse me.
Anyone else? Questions? Comments?
I guess this is more a question for staff, is how, will we be addressing the implementation of this through the budget process, the upcoming budget process then?
Excuse me. Yes, that is our intention. We put the proposed 1718 budget numbers in there. You haven't seen those yet, you will see them in June, because as you know, we're in the budget process, we're making adjustments to the two-year budget. So we wanted to get the latest, greatest numbers into this study. And as far, and when we bring the budget to you in June, we will have this cost allocation plan in those numbers, as well as the direct charges that I spoke of before regarding personnel and, and other things that we know that we can directly charge. I think that it, although it is kind of shocking, that number, that the general fund is going to lose transfers in or revenues from other funds, it is, it is quite a big hit. And I, I think that now that we have these numbers, we almost need to proceed, because what we have done here is we've looked at cost allocation from a more objective standard than it was before. When we go through the budget, we will also go through the impact of cost allocation and discuss with you where we have shifted personnel costs to charge directly, so you'll see those numbers in June. I'm not asking you, or we're not asking you today to adopt a budget, these as budget numbers, but what we're asking you to do is accept the methodology and provide direction to us if you have, whatever direction you want to give us, as far as implementation.
Well, obviously, in reading the report, you know, if we do nothing, in four and a half years, reserves run out. So, so I guess the next obvious question would be, what is the plan to avoid that?
Well, I have to tell you that as your finance director, and having done this work for a number of years, this is the scariest position I've ever been in as a finance director. I really don't want to propose that we hit the general fund to this amount, but I believe it's the right thing to do. I think that in our next biennial two-year budget process, we're going to have to look long and hard at our staffing levels, at our programs that we're providing, and how we're providing service to the community. And we're going to have to bring to the council proposals to solve this, because we can't go four and a half years and say, oops, what do we do now? It's too, yeah, I don't think any of us want to do that. So, you know, the proposal that, that we're making is that with the next biennial budget, we have a solution to this. As you know, our 1617 budget that we adopted was adopted at a deficit of 972,000. That in itself is a little bit upsetting, but a portion of that was related to cost allocation, subsidies given to other funds who couldn't pay their cost allocation, primarily the lighting and landscaping districts and the Parks and Recreation Fund. And part of what we're doing with the lighting and landscaping study, which Mr. Winkler and the finance department and public works have been working on together, is that we're going to direct charge those charges that should be directly charged. And I think that you'll find that that will change the amount of subsidy the general fund has to give to those funds. And we'll see those numbers in June as well. I could keep talking about it, but I think I'll shut up and...
Hopefully, the picture should look a little bit better in June. Potentially.
Look a little bit better, is that what you said?
Probably next budget cycle. You know, I think what we're looking at here is adopting a deficit budget in June, and then, you know, we really need to work, you know, I think, starting out with, you know, probably a strategic planning session with the council on, you know, what are our strategic priorities for our community, where do we want to go? And we can start working on, you know, the next two-year budget cycle, and really look at our programs and operations, and see how we're going to, you know, kind of smooth, you know, through this. You know, there's, you know, the things with implementation of the compensation analysis, you got PERS, you know, Lumen out there, you know, with those increases. So there's, you know, a lot of different, other things that, you know...
A lot of issues to...
Yeah, a lot of issues that we need to, you know, kind of tie into, you know, the budget analysis. And again, it's, it's, you know, not going to be easy, but there's going to be some, you know, policy decisions we're going to have to make on, you know, how to, you know, provide those services.
Sounds like that's going to be a lot of work, and I, just going to go into each department and look at what, what really needs to stay, and what you need to think about, and what maybe we shouldn't be doing.
I think it also raises the, you know, the importance of every aspect of implementing this, particularly on the direct charges. I feel very strongly that, you know, staff has really got to get on board to make sure that they're appropriately allocating costs, because that's, that was principally the way it was done in the past, and obviously it was very subjective, but I think there's more of an objective methodology to employ to do the direct charge, and I think that to the extent that they can, that's something that should be a priority.
Right. As hard as this is to face, because it's, you know, this methodology is much more objective, much more transparent, much easier for people to understand if you get past that it's kind of confusing, the report's kind of confusing, but at least you can understand the methodology behind it, as compared to the other system that was being used. So, is that why, Emily, you feel like we, we have to move to this sort of system rather than the system that was used previously? Or has been being used for the last 25 years, 24 years?
Excuse me. I think that this is, in fact, yes, it is much more transparent, and it's easier to explain. Once I had questions from staff and from some council members, once I explained it, I think you guys got it, the ones that I talked with about. It is, it is a complicated function, and we can draw you a map and kind of help you work through it. But it is more transparent, and I think to the point that Mr. Thrasher was making is that, as long as, it is actually a little bit more accurate, I think, and as long as we have removed those direct charges out. As an example of what I mean by moving those direct charges out, we have utility billing clerks, for example. We know from prior years' time studies that they spend 80% of their time working on utility billing and collections, and 20% of their time on other cash-receiving functions for the city. And so what we did is we took their personnel cost and moved 80% of it out to the utility funds directly, and left the 20% in the general fund to be allocated through this plan. And so that does have, I think, the, the feel... And so that does have, I think, the feel of more accuracy because in the past, if they were all, is still in the general fund and all of that time being allocated 100% through the allocation process, what would happen inadvertently from that is that funds such as, I don't know, non-utility funds might be picking up a piece of that 80%. And so I think that this is much more accurate, it's much more transparent, it's much more understandable for the public, and that's the reason why I'm recommending it. I totally agree that the next, you know, what Jean is saying, the next six to 12, maybe 18 months are going to be very challenging for us as we work through this process. One of the things that we, Jean and I, had recommended and talked to staff about in our strategic meetings and so on and so forth is that what we need to do here is build a financial foundation. And part of doing that is all of these studies that we're working on. This is not saying that anything was done wrong in the past, but what we're saying is let's take a fresh look at these things, let's see where are we now and how do we build for the future. Once we have these studies in place and have developed implementation plans, and some things are going to take longer to do than others, when we have those implementation plans in place, then we can develop a financial plan. We can go into a five-year financial planning model, we can figure out these are our costs, these are where our costs are occurring, these are the funds where they occur, and we can make some assumptions about what the next five years are going to be like, and we can start doing some long-term financial planning, which is, in my view, absolutely essential.
Oh.
Mark?
No.
Oh, I thought you raised your hand.
Emily, are you foreseeing maybe staff layoffs? So we're hoping to reallocate and move everything around so that doesn't happen?
I, yeah, at this point, until we start doing some real evaluations, I wouldn't want to answer that question. I think that probably with the city manager and the directors, we need to just look at how we're doing operations. And we don't know yet what's going to result. I mean, we are kind of under the gun with this thing because we came slamming right up against budget, you know, to present this. So we weren't able to devise a good plan for it ahead of presenting the budget to you. As I think you may know, Roseville and Lowdy both had cuts in their budgets because they are also facing budget issues. So next year, we may have to be looking at some sort of cuts or we may be looking at revenue enhancements. That's another thing that we, it's not always about cuts. It's often about revenue enhancements and economic development and growing our sales tax base is one of the ways that we can meet this challenge.
Just to kind of make one comment, as far as the way direct charges will also work alongside the cost allocation plan is, when I was mentioning human resources and FTEs, as you direct charge those out to their other functions and funds, what have you, it's going to actually shift allocations to those as well because those allocations follow those means. So as you keep an up-to-date cost allocation plan and you direct charge, it will also start to spread those costs out as well. Because it's really, it's following the costs where they are. So if currently you budget everything into your general fund and that's where all the costs are and you don't direct charge out, that's why you're, it's kind of pouring into the general fund. So as you kind of disseminate some of those costs out to what they're doing, it should also level out at the same time.
Thank you.
Okay, any more questions?
Can, can you read the resolution? Can you read what we need to...
Recommendation.
Thank you.
Receive the Cost Allocation Plan Study Report and adopt a resolution accepting the indirect cost allocation plan, cost allocation methodology.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Cruz, second by Hewer. Any discussion? Any more discussion? Okay, call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye. This is a lot of very sad ayes. Okay, and thank you, Emily, and thank you very much for your input.
Thank you for your time.
All right, we're to the city clerk. I'll return my page and make sure, okay, Donna?
Yes, let me get to the staff real quick here. I'll now stop working. This is a, the subject matter is the City Council meeting of July 4th, 2017. Is the city council to consider counseling or moving the meeting to a different day because it's a city holiday?
Well, I will not be here.
I will not either, and I'll probably have the whole week off, so I'm for just canceling it. I don't know how everybody else feels.
Is there anything scheduled? Any hearings scheduled?
Yeah, I didn't think there was, that's why...
Nothing on the 4th.
Do I need to move?
Okay.
Okay, Lori?
No, I'm fine.
Okay, so we do need a motion to cancel the July 4th meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Campion and Cruz, call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye. Passed five to zero.
Great, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the City Council meeting of August 1st, 2017. We consider starting the meeting earlier in the day due to national night out. I believe last year, we started the meeting at 2:00 PM.
How does that sound for you?
I think it's good. I think we're in town.
Are they back in school yet?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
Yeah, we've got to make national night out.
Okay, so do I have a motion for that one? Please do start it at 2:00.
So moved.
I'll move.
Okay, everybody's moving.
That's fine.
Kurt and Lori?
Mark.
Kurt, Mark, I'll call for the vote, please.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer? Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
I tried to put, I was trying to...
That wasn't I for you, right, Councilmember Hewer?
Yes, I.
Okay, five to zero passed.
I phoned him.
Thank you.
Okay, comments by staff? Emily?
So after getting all of you sad, I have to tell you something good.
Oh, yay!
Which is that the Finance Department has once again won the GFOA Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting for the fiscal year that ended June 30, 2016. I'd like to give a shout out to Michelle Neely. She has been one of our, she's just solid. She knows Galt, she knows Galt's accounting. We couldn't do, run our Finance Department without her. And so when we submitted for the application, we asked GFOA to honor her and they gave her a certificate as well as a certificate for the city.
Well, that's great. Make sure that's in the minutes, please. Okay, Chris?
Nothing further, thanks.
Steve?
Just a quick water conservation update as we're moving into the warmer months. For the month completed April, compared to the sort of pre-drought base year of 2013, just under 51% water conservation in that period of time. So we need to keep up the good work as we go into groundwater sustainability plans. We're leaps ahead. We're staying, I've recommended we stay at stage two to keep up that effort as we go into that planning period that's ahead of us.
Thank you very much. Cora? Anything? Mark?
Yes.
Starbucks has started grading today.
Woo!
There we go.
I think it's terrible. That's just my opinion.
Lot of big trucks on that small site.
Armando? Oh, you're grabbing for the microphone.
I do, I have something. I don't know if I can top Starbucks because that's the number one question in Galt. I did want to bring up 4th of July. Our Independence Day celebration is coming up really quick. We are looking for sponsors to pay for the event, so if you guys know of anybody or contact, please provide it to me. We're also accepting registrations for our fifth annual Kevin Todd 5K and our IDC Parade. So if you know of anybody that'd like to participate, you're all invited also to walk or be in the parade. I hope to see you then.
Thank you very much. Chief?
The only thing I have is this week is National Police Officer Memorial Week. That's why you saw the flags flying at half-staff on Monday and so, and I know a lot of folks from our region are back, not from our department, but from our region are back in Washington, DC for the celebration and memorial, so.
Okay, Jean?
Don't forget Strawberry Festival this weekend, Saturday and Sunday. We're also been working with Public Works and we have a wastewater analysis to bring before the council. We're talking about maybe a study session, you know, with that. We want to kind of throw that up in the air and see, you know, where it lands, if the council would be interested in doing a kind of a focus workshop, you know, for that study and then work with Ms. Edels and Mr. Winkler and on trying to schedule a date.
Okay, sounds good to me. Kimberly?
I went to the League of California Cities City Attorney Conference a couple of weeks ago, and there were a lot of very informative sessions and one particularly lively session on the sharing economy and Airbnb in particular.
Councilmember Campion?
Yeah, I have one item. We, I think council received a letter from the Historical Society regarding their grant application of last year. They have not been able to expend those funds simply because it's a number of reasons, but they will be engaging the services of an engineer to start the design. So the question is, can we, can I put this on the agenda to carry this over in the event that they don't expend the funds before June 30th? So I'd like to put it on the next agenda if that's possible.
Okay, sounds good to me. Okay, everybody? All righty, Paige?
Lots of things happening in the year, kids getting scholarships, some exciting things, and kids getting into some great colleges. Strawberry Festival, I think somebody might be attempting to cook, so make sure you guys come out and see that. Thank you, chief, for stepping up. Anybody else cooking? No? Okay, who are you competing against? Oh, boy, two firefighters.
I will do my best not to come in last. That's all I can promise.
Okay. Councilmember Hewer?
I attended the 18th Annual Public Safety and Community Appreciation Luncheon with the city manager and the police chief and Lieutenant Derrickson. They had a presentation on childhood trauma and what that does to, how that impacts public safety. Also, this Sunday, I mean, this Saturday also, besides Strawberry Festival, McFarland Ranch is being dedicated, the completion of the house is, so they're having a dedication ceremony on the 20th. And then, of course, on Thursday is the Wine Industry Seminar being held here in the city of Galt for owners of wineries.
And you're going to go there and represent the city, correct?
I will, yes.
All righty. Vice Mayor Cruz?
Well, I've been asked to speak up about what happened about a week and a half ago and making it short and sweet. The change of the guard back in Washington, DC has caused a lot of confusion and it seemed like 360 members of the Sacramento region in the cap to cap knew a little bit more than people they were talking to, which was kind of scary. Couple of the pauses that came out of it for our city was that one of the items on the federal budget that was to be cut was the community block grants. And once that got word out to the electeds and representatives going back there, a lot of the federal representatives got an airful, and I'm glad to say that those were saved and they're back on the budget.
Great.
One of the other things that we pushed heavily was in regards to transportation, specifically items called tiger grants, which don't have a direct effect on the city of Galt, but there is a trickle-down effect when it comes to dealing with organizations we work with, like the county and RT. Those are back on the budget as of right now. And the last one dealt with our most recent issues as far as fires up in the forest and so forth. Seems people are coming around to the idea that a very thick forest is not always a good thing. There have been several movements made to thin out the forests, and then that'll actually cut back, both thin out the forests and clean out all of the underbrush that access fuel for these fires. I did not know this at the time, I was part of the group that went in. It actually improves our watershed, so the issues we're having currently with lack of water, well, previously, may be avoided. And that's what I've got for you.
Okay, I'd like to bring back, I know that some of us do and some of us don't, and some of us don't want to use, but discretionary funds back, please. So if any of you have some leftover, you want to, whatever you want to do with it, please, can we bring that up at the next meeting? And then I do want to, again, say to everyone to come to the Strawberry Festival, and I'm going to be a little shameless here, but I think the chief will think it's okay. I'd like you guys to all stop by our perfectly possible new animal nonprofit here in town that we're working with the city and the police department and other people in the community to help at-risk animals all around. We've been doing a good job of helping with the feral cat population right now and hoping to go into phase two soon, so I hope that you guys would come and at least see what's going on out there at the Strawberry Festival. So after being shameless, I guess I'll just...
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, do you have something else?
I just had one thing, real quick, I neglected. Something I'd like to have brought back the next council meeting if possible is to have the contract for our political advocate reviewed and see if we can get that back. I know money is tight, but I got to tell you, it was really hard back there getting appointments and information solo. It's nice to have somebody back that knows the ins and outs. So I don't know what we can do, how we can do it, but I'd like to have it brought back to council if we can.
Okay, and one more time, Strawberry Festival, and the meeting is adjourned.